Okay. So, welcome to the planning board meeting. This is July 2nd, I'm sorry, June 2nd, 2022. First order of business is to attend to. Development review ordinance amendments as we address the commercial solar facilities. And when last we met as a large group, I know we had. Had anyway, our last meeting, we talked about some things, but thought we would want to make sure to talk to you too, George, when you return. Cause we had go through some things, had some suggestions, had some ideas. Relative to the memo that we had gone through before that you'd written. So I think we wanted to make sure to. Get some consensus on that and then move forward. So if we could. And let's see, I think where we were with that one.
But I didn't have an opportunity to review the YouTube.
Okay, okay. Thank you for doing so. And so maybe we may to start, where would you like to start?
Uh, no, I think we should clear up. The remnants from the last meeting.
Okay.
I know one had to do with wooded wetlands.
Okay. So what number was that Craig? Where we are from that? It was like. Was it?
12.
12. Okay, yes.
I had posed that there be none, and I gather the discussion is maybe there should be. And Rich offered a compromise. I don't know if it got much traction of having a 75 foot setback if the wetlands weren't in five acres or larger. That's kind of.
Right. Um. Instead compromise, I think was offered up because we had a discussion about how much stuff was, you know, in a parcel, right? And if there are wetlands, what does that leave you? Remember, we're talking about some of that. Craig, what are your thoughts on this?
This is gonna be terrible to. Can I build right up for the water?
The. I'm, you know, I don't feel strongly about this. I only did it because I know state law laws, the state program doesn't. And and the primary value of wooded wetlands is really for stormwater control and flood protection. Some will be deer yards as we found. Previously in one of the subdivisions we looked at. And so that then that setback would come into play, but I'm fine with a 75 foot setback if you want to be uniform across the board. Or buffer, I should say, consequently, a setback.
Yeah. Around any wooden. Or are you putting a size to it?
I'm fine with any, because I think the mapping that the US Department of Interior does. Doesn't go down to a real small scale anyway. So I don't know exactly how precise they get, but. I'm guessing that it's going to have to be several acres in size anyway to even show up in their mapping.
I would have to think so too.
Yeah.
It'd be seven acres.
So I'm fine with that. That's. Okay, so I want to make sure I'm following you guys. So what you're posing is doing is what is now the bottom of page 10, just. The references could read weather so that it would. That sentence in 75 foot setback naturally vegetated buffer from wetlands included in the US Fish and Wildlife Natural Weapon Inventory period. Is that correct? Yeah, eliminate except.
Yeah. Yep. And.
And so and so you want to eliminate the next pair, the next sentence as well.
Yeah. So just to kind of clear the air on that. So the the idea that Rich offered up that compromise about, you know, the five acres and stuff. Are we good that we're not going to entertain that at this time?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Like I said, I'm guessing that their level of scrutiny is such that. You know, it'd have to be several acres or more to even be mapped.
Okay. And I would, I would agree with that because things too small are. I don't want to say they're insignificant. They can't, it's hard to view what they are trying to indicate.
Yeah, particularly on something like that, that's heavily based on the soil types.
Great. All right. So if we're good on that one, number 12, are we ready to move on to the prime farm farmland discussion? This had been somebody who I think we've been thinking about for quite some time. I know months ago, we talked about this a little bit. And thank you for this suggestion. So we all together on 13 here. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at the bottom of my printout, which is, and maybe this is not correct for you guys, but it is page five of eight where the suggested worded wording.
Looking at George's. Yeah, it's in my demo, Craig.
Is that the right way to do this? Or do you want to go to the other other one?
So Anthony had suggested, I don't know if you guys discussed it or not, but moving this as a prohibition. Further up in the ordinance.
Yeah, so it would, it would be at the, it would be under citing prohibition. So as I was looking at it. Yeah, it seemed like that was a citing provision. So my suggestion was is to move it to the block. And now the documents that you have before you. It was moved to the bottom of page eight.
There is one substantive thing I think would be worth discussing some, and that is. I had originally written it up as no more than 10% of the total project area. And that comes from the guidance that the state put together, the Department of Agriculture put together, but I later learned that. That that's in conflict with the definition of state statute of farmland, which relies on five acres. And the definition in statute, which I did bring enough copies for everybody, but I can read to you. It builds into not only acreage rather than percentage, but it also, whether it's really actively been farmed rather than. Fallow soil out there. Farmland means any track or tracks of land, including woodland and wasteland. Of at least five contiguous acres on which farming or agricultural activities have contributed to a gross annual farming income. Of at least $2,000 per year from the sales value of agricultural products. And then there's some caveats that go on, but. That's the gist of it. Got this thing in there. A parcel of land on an island may not be considered contiguous to a parcel on the other side of the river. It seems kind of obvious to me, but so. The only question I have for everybody is, do you want to stick with the 10%, which comes from that set of guidelines that. Department of Agriculture came up with. Or want to change that to five acres? I recall. Steve Boxbaum at one point, and I don't remember when, this was quite a while ago, indicating that. If you went with a percentage, you would penalize. Projects like his that are more modest in size, where I don't remember the exact size of his, but it's like 20 or 25 acres. So you're taking potentially two acres out of use. Where's, if you have a, an acreage thing, you're not penalizing the small. Facilities quite as much. But it doesn't really matter to me. It's more a matter of whether you think it's important. Be consistent with that state definition of farmland. I don't know why, it seems like the state's actually in conflict with itself on this.
So what, what would we have that would be considered from probably the doctor road?
Yeah, any of the hayfields in town, I would think certainly the.
The big fat farm.
The two farms, yeah. I mean, if you relied on it, general, having to generate some income. That's the only things I can think of. Where people are generating income off of. Farming commons, right? Belgrade, I mean, in other towns, obviously, there'd be a lot more, but.
We've already got.
How would that be substantial though? It has a private debt. I mean, how will the town know how much money is around?
Well, yeah, it gets complicated. That's the problem, I think. The, and I wasn't going to suggest that we use the definition from. Statute. I was going to suggest that we either keep it the way it is or just replace it with five acres. Cause I don't think we want to get in the business of asking people, okay, how much money did you earn off this hayfield last year?
Yeah, I know. We have to check.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I would like to avoid that.
Yeah. Really none of our business.
It really is not any of our business.
I only bring it up because it's conflict with statute. That's all.
Yeah. So if we left it like how it's worded here. Craig, when you're thinking about those. Those farmland areas in Belgrade. Do you think that this 10% as is worded? Would be a problem? Or might you prefer altering this to go to five acres? The five acres.
That's I don't feel very strongly either way.
Yeah. So if we didn't adopt the state statute, but use five acres, might it read, let's see. Protect prime farmland and farmland of the statewide important agricultural soils land. And then how would we do about the five acres?
Well, I don't, I think, Peter, all you would need to say is no more than five acres of the total project may be located on land with soils defined.
Right. Okay. So if we did that, that would mean that. Let's see, you're basically capping the amount that would be on prime farm. That's what we're saying. Saying no, not more than that. I'm good with that. How do you all feel about that? You good, Pete?
Okay, yeah.
All right. So, so that sentence would read no more than five acres. Of the total project may be located on land with soils defined by US Department of Agriculture, blah, blah, blah.
And yeah, eliminated by 2,000 revenue pieces.
There is no revenue piece as is written. But you're right, though, we're not going to go by revenue piece by the state statute, that part that that came from the definition. Which seems to be.
So that would have to be changed in the citing provisions. Anthony.
Yes, yeah. And you guys feel like, you know, to me that we're prohibiting. The citing of these things on five acres of prime farmland. So that's the reason I put it there. Is that agreeable to everyone? Do you think that's the right placement of that?
You know, I think that's fine. I'm pretty sure that we require them to do the soil analysis reports as part of the application material. That they have this minute. So.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. Craig? Pete? And and I can see Sarah says, I'm good with it too. Thank you, Sarah. Sarah's zoomed in. So she's chatting. Excellent. Okay. Okay, great. Had we gone over 14, 15, and 16 already before?
We previously went over the fencing.
Yes, those are, I think those are all.
I was going to ask though about 15. Yeah, no, that's been dealt for, like that checked off. 16 is the one that I wasn't sure if that had been addressed yet.
Oh, I think it was at the last meeting. You do a quick search.
16 was.
All electrical system installations be performed by or under supervision of main license.
Yeah, we took.
Okay.
Where is it, Craig? I'm not seeing.
I don't know. I can remember.
I remember getting on that.
I'm good.
You know, I'm not, I recall talking about it, but I don't see it in this document. So where, where do we think that this? Which section should that should that be?
So. I'm thinking not citing.
So there's an item. Well, in my memo, it's number three about being designed by a main registered electrical engineer. Maybe after that. So it's designed by a local engineer installed when main electrician.
Makes sense. That would make sense to me because it seemed like it's a standard we're looking for for to have approval. It's a logical segue from one concept to another in my mind.
Just so.
You find it?
Yes, I did. And so, and so that that sentence right now says the solar. Energy system shall be designed by a main registered electrical engineer. And then I'll just add to that, all electrical system installation shall be performed by or under the supervision of main license.
Yep.
So if you have the newer ones, I believe page nine, let us see.
Thank you, Richard. This could be Sarah coming in. And then. Was it, I think next for us was just talking about the clearing of land. Right? That was one thing we wanted to talk about. Are we all okay to move on to that topic? Yep. So maximum area of clearing of land that is primarily forested or wooded vegetation. And then I think in Georgia, in your memo, you said include, and then question mark, how much clear cutting is too much? Then how much negates meeting the objectives of the conference plan regarding the character of Belgrade as well as otherwise? Um. So where are we with this one?
I don't know. Paul, did you guys discuss this?
No, we're table.
Table is right.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I offer two possible alternatives. One is to, you know, just set a. X number of acres is the maximum limit. Or some kind of incentive for a developer to minimize the acreage cleared like. Well, the example I gave for every acre they clear a forest, they have to somehow protect as open space, another acre in Belgrade. The problem with the latter is it's more complex than minister and reporters tracking and all this other stuff. So in that sense. Who'd be simpler to have a maximum. Acreage.
Well. For our purposes, I like the simpler method. Um, although conceptually, the other part does offer a more sophisticated.
It's sexy.
Yeah. But it's not unlike other things that happen at both federal and state government and things where.
Well, I would trade off.
Wetlands. Yeah, exactly.
That kind of thing, but. But then you have to. You have to have the systems in place to be able to track that kind of stuff. And.
Yeah.
And we, that may be a challenge for us.
I would, I would dare say would be a challenge for us because we are resource constrained as it is.
So isn't there like a 15 acre max? What's the state maximum clear cut?
A hundred acres.
Thank you.
But I can't clear cut to put a subdivision. That'd be good with the 15 year old one.
Yeah, 15.
15, I'm okay with 15. I think that's. I mean, I don't have a lot to judge this by, but. The. I mean, 15 acres is a substantial clear cut in a town like Belgrade. And. Yeah, I know. You know, I suppose the consequence of that is that. Somebody that. I mean, I never thought until the proposal off of eight 11, I came along. I never thought anybody would propose, it wouldn't be cost effective to propose a real large. Clear cut for the purposes only of a solar farm. Obviously, I didn't know much about it, but. But. You know, if you put, put a place a limit, unless it's a very large limit, you're. Pretty much excluding larger. Ones that are exclusively in woodland. Just so that, you know, we think about that, but I personally can live with 15 acres.
But yeah, I'm sort of thinking. It's a new tech, it's a new industry, it's new technology, especially up here. You know, we could, you can always go up, increase. So if you go on the low side, you know, you're allowing, you know, the business that go on, et cetera, et cetera, and they can make the money out. And if, if later in the future, you know, later on, if the demand, the increase acres, you can do that. You never. It's like, it's hard to go back and reduce it. So I just, I just, or it's a new industry, you know, you're going to have to feel all the way through. I'd like to see about 10 acres.
No, Pete, I'm kind of leaning toward towards 10 acres too, but maybe for a different reason. Not opposed to what you're saying at all. I agree with what you're saying. I'm curious to. At one of the meetings that the, the place up here had a DEP application. I know one of the town's residents was there and they talked about the value of the forest. And what it accomplishes for everybody environmentally. And in, in how that to take away the trees would be counterproductive. To then put up a solar panel in its place from the example that was given at the time. And you might remember that comment.
Well, no, I didn't, I wouldn't at that meeting, but I had thought of that myself.
So, um.
Terms of carbon sequestration.
Correct, correct. That's exactly where I'm thinking of. So. I don't know, like Pete suggested, starting off small is not a bad thing. I, I believe. There is value in the wooded acres that we do have. I guess I will suggest in back Pete's idea of 10 acres to start with.
Could you get it on a hill? Everything on lakes or on a hillside.
Yeah.
You know. I was at that meeting.
Yes.
I listened to what they had said too. They made a lot of sense. The amount of water that absorbs. They didn't really have any good answers on how to, they said just bring it to a ditch. Run around that. So. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So from a carbon sequestration perspective, maybe some other things.
This was before we actually started work on, on the ordinance, but I had that same question in my mind. Where's the tipping point or where's the break even point? On how much woodland you clear where the, the sequestration. Is outweighs the amount of. Benefit in terms of replacing carbon dioxide emissions to the atmosphere by using solar. Well. And I was having a hard, I came up with some information. I mean, obviously, it made a lot of the large. Woodlot owners. Sell carbon credits on the open market and, and, but they have tens of thousands of acres. And it turns out that Steve Buck actually turned me on to some research that's been done about that and. We're not even in the ballgame. I mean, you, you're talking thousands of acres to come up with the same amount of. Benefit to the atmosphere as a relatively small solar power facility. So. I'm not sure that's the issue I originally thought it was. But because I was thinking. Ahead that, well, may, at that tipping point is where we, you know, before that tipping point is when, where we put the limit, but. We're nowhere close to that.
So we're well under, no matter if it's.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking thousands or tens of thousands of acres. The. The other consideration is that. We may have facility, a facility that's proposed where most of it's in a field. Like a hayfield, old hayfield, but. Between clearing of. Wooded buffers for the roadway and, and, and the power line. And, and then maybe some additional expansion, you know, that's all going to count to whatever cap we come up with.
But there's not going to be much of a hayfield.
I'm sorry?
There's not going to be a lot of hay.
No, there isn't going to be a lot of Belgrade hayfield. Because this is not my case.
We just decided. So I think it's more of the water consumption on the hillside. This is my biggest. Concern with the whole thing because either I did just new brooks and new. Water and. Maybe because those trees, that's what was 40 gallons for.
Yeah.
40 gallons a day for a five inch tree, four inch tree. I mean, so you take a hillside like where they want to put it over there. That's eliminating a lot of water. That's going to be running down that hill where they already have water issues in the basements.
Well, I'm fine with 10 acres. The. I mean, they're still going to have to do a stormwater runoff analysis anyway. And, you know, as you said, woodland infiltrates a lot more water than grassland does. And certainly more than. Something like this where you're going to have an increase in pervious surface area. So anyway, I'm fine with 10 acres.
One, one last question about this. I think this discussion is good too, to help answer your question about. You know, negating how much negates meeting the objectives of the comprehensive plan regarding the character of that. So specifically about the character of Belgrade. Um.
Yeah.
I think going to lower end speaks to the character of Belgrade rather than the upper end. That's my personal take on this. So I want to make sure we addressed your question.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. I, I. Having a hundred acre clear cut. Even with buffers and stuff around it. I'm not sure it's really consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, it isn't. So it is not consistent. Okay. So are we in agreement then 10? 10 acres then? Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Good shape. So we're saying.
Let me ask you a quick question. So do we think that, because just looking through here, I'm not finding a good place for that to be. So maybe it just needs to be its own letter. Under.
It makes sense to me. Its own letter or number.
And, and just borrowing some of the language here, just keeping it really simple and concise. I've written, please weigh in here. And and just borrowing some of the language here, just keeping it really simple and concise, I've written, please weigh in here. The maximum area of land that is primarily forest land or the maximum area of wooded vegetation that may be cleared for solar facility is ten. By the way, the reason I use that term wooded vegetation, I was thinking of the uh clear cut down the street from me. Uh which now has a lot of sprout growth on it. Uh and I could see that somebody coming along proposing that for a solar facility.
Hmm. Good. Okay, so I think we're good there, so that are we in agreement too that that not only is the wording appropriate that was just said, but that would be. Under its own basically enumerated standard of approval, it would go under that area. Anthony, with that.
Yeah, so I mean, what I've done right now is I just put it between setbacks. Minimum setbacks and visual screen.
I can live with that. Good. Okay, are are we then on to number eighteen? This is shaded. And that was um in George's memo, uh should we require a minimum of fifteen percent of the developed land area to be reserved as open space? As has been required of subdivision since the late eighties, so did we talk about that a little bit last time, Craig? I think you did, right, because we're talking about consistency across um. Ordinances and. That kind of thing. And so let me ask the group this, we we had talked about. Sarah had put together a a lot of nice chart and talked about the setback from the um. Property line. That puts people away from the property, that will put some uh development away from the property. Are we then also asking? See fifteen percent. To be preserved for open space, does any of that count towards it?
That's how historically, at least. Earlier, it my first day on the plane board, that's how it worked, that the uh. Uh areas protected uh either at buffer or whatever it might be, uh count uh could uh. Count towards the fifteen percent in subdivisions, that is. Uh and that made it more appealing to applicants, but um. In the the uh. Rocky Shores Estates subdivision, they went a step further and well, they actually protected more than fifteen percent. As open space.
So. Like up here in this proposed one up here is multiple properties. So if they're wanting to list them, a leasing or. Some of it's going to be leased, some of it's going to be bought. But if they're not buying the whole acre, the whole property, then that remnant of that property can't be used as the fifteen percent opening there. It's gotta be the in the amount of property that they're leasing will buy. So if they're leasing. Ten acres out of a twenty acre property. Then that other ten acres doesn't come towards that fifteen percent.
That's right, and 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 uh. So the wording I used uh based it on then acres that are actually developed or disturbed.
Right, it almost doesn't matter if it's leased or owned, right, it's total, total leased or um total disturbed.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's not, because. Uh so the disturbed disturbed town was. If they're only leasing town, they're disturbed town. Then that property is. Well, I guess if they're leasing fifteen, I disturbed town. They've recovered, they're leasing more than. More than what they're disturbed fifteen or so more.
I I I I understand what you're saying and yes is the answer, right, that. Um. Just trying to come up with a good example. I want to come up with one.
I lost the list and straight over here, can you recap that again?
Well, I was just concerned that, you know, the just leasing. That they're not including, you have a, even though it's on that same body, so they're leasing this amount.
Yeah.
But they're not including this amount for the fifteen percent, even though they're not leasing it, but they can only, the worst word is, you can only. Do it them, the property they're leasing and clearing and just doing. So, yeah. I was just bringing it up because there's multiple properties, there's. There's several properties.
Plus it's a mix and match of purchase and.
Of each property, it's not a whole property.
Yeah.
Right. Because you can come up with some kind of wacky thing of of for them to say, oh, well, we have this three and a half acres here and this one and a half acres here, and then then the ten we're gonna buy. Uh you know, and so you come up with a total eventually maybe fifteen or something acres. Um what we're trying to say is whatever I think, whatever it is you lease or buy. All of that, um you have to have fifteen percent reserved for open space um in the disturbed area. Let's see, how can we say it well?
So the fifteen percent would be driven by what the acreage is, it's actually developed.
Right.
Regardless of whether they own it or lease it or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And it, so are we good with that, that the leasing or buying doesn't, it does not matter?
Doesn't matter, and I think with what we have with all the buffers and setbacks and. I mean, most asking to take care of the mass everyone is.
It might, might. But.
And and so are we also in agreement in thinking that whatever is is a setback due to buffers or whatever, that that can be part of the fifteen percent that's reserved for.
Once it designated as such.
That and they have to do that on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had to do mine at the bottom of my subdivision towards the lake, picking white ones and stuff, which actually created a better situation than doing it from setback from the property.
This.
You know, so I did, I had to do it at the bottom, so I have. Four or six acres from where I can't remember.
Are you protecting more valuable land?
Yes, so, you know, that's, I was required to put it down there.
Oh, that wasn't your decision?
It might have been partially with my engineer, my engineer, probably. But I have quite a chunk down at the bottom.
Yeah.
That's non-bailable. It's probably well above fifteen percent. Yeah.
So if you if you get, you know, wetland and natural land there. Uh there's setbacks anyways, so.
Yeah.
They kind of, they can't really go in there and develop anything, right, so. The fifteens, so the question is, is that fifteen percent on account? That 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 part of fifteen percent, yeah.
I think what we're suggesting is you indicate on the plan, if you don't indicate that. Setback from the wetland as part of being reserved for open space, then you're gonna have to indicate it somewhere else from the plan. Okay, I I believe, George, am I capturing that correctly?
I mean, maybe we wanna.
You want to do that?
Add some some language that says.
You want to make it more restrictive?
That the uh.
I just want to make it more restricted.
That the. Acreage to be reserved as open split spaces to be shown on the site plan.
Yeah.
Does open space need to be defined?
Ooh, good question, question, yeah. Because one might say, is open space a setback that includes a wooden buffer?
What?
So for two hundred acre far.
And and.
Thirty acres.
That would be reserved for open.
For sure, open space is defined in statute, but I couldn't recite for you what it is.
Uh.
Because there is a program for why tax incentives for protecting open space.
Is there a definition page in Jordan?
Uh well, the ordinance has definitions.
Yep.
Because we're just adding to the commercial.
So.
Um I I wonder, instead of using the term open space. Might we consider just saying that a minimum of fifteen percent of us. Solar facilities land area. Is to be preserved as undeveloped.
Should we be on development here?
Space. Yeah.
Everyone's.
Pretty common term, yeah, yeah. You know, I I I just wouldn't want someone to do some clear cutting and say, well, we've opened the space. It's now an open space, yeah. I think you're right about at a minimum, adding the term undeveloped. In there.
So undevelop exclusively would would mean that. How the landscape looked is gonna be left intact. Because undeveloped to me means that it doesn't have houses in it.
Undeveloped and natural open space, yeah.
As as the worst, as it just started, because what was when they acquired the land? I don't know about.
I know what you're saying, and I agree, it's like, as it is untouched, don't mess with it.
Yeah.
Don't develop it, don't cut it.
I think I think the word natural gets us there.
Okay.
My question is, do we exclude the setbacks because?
I'm down to. Especially here.
You know, leaving the upper properties as undeveloped on setbacks. Isn't really gonna help the lower part go towards the lake. So if this thing is so long, our setbacks alone are for the. If they're way up on top of the hill, what are they doing? Towards the lake.
Yeah, so if we went with what we have now. In and by itself, the answer would be, I think, maybe nothing. But we also have some other tools at our disposal, don't we, with um.
Stormwater control.
Stormwater control. Um there's also the aesthetic, what do we call that thing before, the visual impact analysis? That too is gonna play a part, I think. Um.
Is there is there a limitation on the slope? Of the land that?
Yes.
Yeah. Was it twenty percent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the resource protection. So, yes.
Yeah, I'm not trying to advertise this as a an especially meaningful way to protect open space, because it won't be, but. It will be consistent with how we treat subdivisions.
Is it, does that, do you think that we have sufficient tools so far with what we have listed?
Or we just add the terminology on the lakeside of the development.
Yeah, but it's something you can talk about, sure.
So like on this example up here on on the hillside, what we're saying is that. That the fifteen per- percent on the lakeside. How how would you say that?
On the lakeside of the development.
And.
Okay.
What about one sort of like cited like Steve where?
There is no.
There is a lakeside, but it's not even visible from the lake.
Yeah, so that wouldn't. The one really have an effect on that one, because it's really not a lakeside, I mean, there is, but I think it's actually.
Yeah, I I would, I I'm getting a little twitchy about. All the redundancy, uh I mean, we already have. Uh visual impact assessment, visual buffers, you know, to deal with that kind of an issue. I'm not sure this is the right tool to try to do that.
Um.
Try to do. For I think for a solar field, it may be appropriate. And you know, this is getting away from being consistent with uh non-solar field, yeah. But if I saw a field there, we're gonna treat them as a solar field, they're different from typical type of kind of development, so.
Well, they're only different in the sense that they're gonna be bigger. All the other issues are the same. Stormwater runoff, phosphorus runoff. Visibility.
Yeah, it's it's the problem of that. He, what they're calling. Impervious, it's just the pole in the base. So they're minimizing it to a point where it's. It's really not factual.
Well, the way we're defining it, the surface area of the module count is impervious as well. And rightly so.
Can you say that again? I didn't get muffled when you said that.
The uh the the surface area of the module, the uh solar panel would count towards the amount of surface impervious surface area.
Right, like a roof wood.
Yeah, just like a roof wood.
We've talked about that before.
Yeah.
Because that there was one thing that Craig, I think, brought up in in terms of equity with other things.
Craig, I'll I'll meet you halfway, how about if we exclude um the buffers, the all the other existing buffers from this fifty percent, so it's above and beyond that.
Sure, it works.
So just a reminder, we establish. Setbacks to be one twenty-five. So whichever, the optimum that they were able to use a property there will be seventy-seven percent of that property. So we're taking off from the hundred percent, we're taking off fifteen. Well, um I think I did about from the uh hundred percent, we already buy the buffers, we most likely will take twenty-three percent. So we we add in the fifteen on top of the twenty-three, or that fifteen is part of the twenty-three.
It's with the buffers, yeah, fifteen.
So then, any developer then is is seventy-seven minus fifteen, they they will not be able to be developed. They're only gonna be able to develop sixty percent of the property that they purchased.
But he says we can always change it in the future if you want. It's a good start.
So we could add something like areas included in buffers and setbacks shall not count towards uh this provision.
Okay. And so this would be.
A little bit more meaningful in terms of what's actually being prepared.
So this would be a standard of approval, right? So this would be a standard of approval, right? This one would be, I'm saying that for Anthony's sake.
Yeah. So, so what I've done. Is put clear cutting and open space in one paragraph. So, so that paragraph now reads clear cutting and open space. Maximum area of land that is primarily forest land or the maximum area of wooded vegetation. That may be cleared for a commercial solar facility is ten acres. Additionally, a minimum of fifteen percent of a solar facility's developed land area. Is to be reserved as undeveloped and natural open space. The acres to be reserved as open space is to be indicated on the site plan. Areas included in buffers and setbacks shall not be included in the open space provision.
I think that.
You read, you said ten percent?
Fifteen percent. Did I say ten percent?
I thought you read ten percent. Never mind. I just still tinkering with this in my head. So if I have a, an area that I want to develop. They say to make the numbers beautiful, ten acres. I'm going to be with the buffers that we have set up right now. I'm going to be able to develop exclusively seventy-seven percent of that. So we're talking about that are going to be able to develop a little bit over seven acres. But then on top of that, I had to cut back down fifteen acres. So. I mean fifteen percent, which is one point five acres. So I'm going to be able to develop only six point five acres.
Five point five.
Five point five. Even, even harder. So I only want to be able to develop half of the land. I would invest here for sure. That's okay with me. I just.
You know, it's restrictive, right?
It's going to be very restricted.
Okay, we all sit on that one? We good?
Yeah.
Right. I think the next one was nineteen use of herbicides to manage vegetation within the development is prohibited.
I think we addressed that the last.
Okay. That's done.
Yes.
Okay, and we, we, what was the last one? About thirty, within thirty days of completion, so number twenty, and we did there?
Yeah, we did that.
So what else do we need to talk about with this?
There, there was one item that I thought you left unresolved and that had to do in, not in my memo, but. On the working draft on the last page, the inspections. And there was continued discussion with my impression of requiring soil sampling.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I had. For, you know, a routine monthly inspection, I had come up with this language and suggested it. But I have a suggestion for. The, all the discussion about soil sampling. Made me think that that would not be a bad thing to include as part of the decommissioning plan. That at the time of decommissioning before the property either sold or turned into another use, potentially agriculture. That, and this is standard operating procedure for other types of industrial land uses. That an environmental site assessment be required and this language that I've left up on your desks is what I came up with. The lie on the. By this testing of materials, standard practice for doing environmental site assessments, which is what E P uses. And it would be part of the decommissioning process and decommissioning wouldn't be complete until it was completed. And submitted to the phone working officer. Richard would be walking like this at that point in time and looking at Kane and. Drooling out corners of his mouth. Next Wednesday? But. And that would be a more precise way of ensuring that you would find any leaks or discharges of oils. Or hazardous substances. And without, you know, a, a source of program, so you play program random or otherwise. Across tens of acres of land is not going to do it. It's not, you're going to miss nine times out of ten, you're going to miss the contamination. And so this would be a more precise way to do it. It's consistent with standard operating procedures for other industries. That way it sounds assured that the property is, has not been detrimentally contaminated at the end of its life.
I really like this idea.
Done every couple of years or something.
Oh, no, it wasn't intended to replace the visual inspection, it was to complement it. So the, the monthly physical inspection would continue.
Yeah.
And this, and, and you know, if they find leaks, they got to report it and clean it up, the D P standards and all that. This would. This sort of branched off from your discussion about. Soil sampling in the context of an inspection. And I think this is. The better way to incorporate. To achieve some of the same goals of ensuring that the land has not been detrimentally contaminated. But to do so at the end of its. Life as a solar facility. You're making me nervous over there, Craig.
Well, you sell a house on a lake, you get to inspect a separate system. So can we add upon sale and decommission?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Upon sale and decommissioning. So we know each time it's given sold.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that, I mean, a prudent buyer would insist on that anyway.
You, you're saying upon sale and or decommissioning.
These trade hands a lot.
Okay.
So just to keep tabs on it. So we're not requiring it every month, we're not requiring it every year. But every time it trades hands, we have a clean slate.
That's, that's an interesting, you bring that up because as I understand, what I've read about a little bit, a lot of these. Entity or the party funding these gold fields, they're doing on an investment basis where. They get investors come in and they, they put up the funding and then at some particular point in time, they're going to sell. The original, you know, putting packages together, they're going to sell it out there in the marketplace. So you're going to see a lot of changing in ownership going on in a, in a ten-year period. Well, and we don't know because it's a new product. So that's a good suggestion for that reason. Keep that in mind.
So Craig, I, I did add, I, I have this language in here, it's about halfway through, it says the environmental site assessment shall be. Complete in accordance with American Society for Testing Materials and it gives the standard practice number and all that. Prior and as revised and prior to the transfer of ownership or change in use of the facility site. Is that adequate or does that need to be beefed up some?
No, I didn't actually see that. So prior to the transfer of ownership.
It does. And I think it's a good concept because when these transactions occur, we get a, there'll be a track record of what's going on there, right? So this is a good thing.
So you just, what you're talking about, verbiage is in this.
The number of the standard.
Well, I wrote it and I forgot it.
I think this. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, very good. Very good suggestion. I like the standard language that's used in here. Excellent. Okay, and I think we addressed the other question too. It does not take the place of the visual, right? Right, that, because that still has been a, happened. This is other stuff. Compliment that. Okay. Any other loose rounds to cover?
The one. This wasn't discussed at the last meeting, but. And I know we're out of time tonight, but. With Richard, but the. One thing that we never put, we agreed upon, but we never penned the paper on was. An amendment in the body of the existing ordinance where we would extend the life of the permit for everybody. From twelve months to thirty-six months. And in my email, I, I mean, it was a simple change. I suggested that. You know, the simple change that would be required to make that happen. Bear call. He brought, I'm laying out the timeline that he's required to go through. And a lot of, most of which, which is not under his control because it's under the control of the P U C and C M P. That twelve months is just, you know, impossible to start substantial construction. So I, I, I think we need to. Come to agreement on the language to make that happen.
What you suggest though? Thirty-six months?
Yeah.
Then an extension.
A one-year extension.
So for.
For everybody.
For everybody as far as houses and projects and.
Well, only in the commercial development.
To apply not just to solar, apply to any other commercial.
Yeah, I thought we had agreed on this, but maybe not.
No, not four years. What about two years with a year comeback for an extension?
Less three years.
So that'd be three years.
My understanding is that might not be long enough.
Because of the P U C.
P U C and C M P.
And.
I mean, he's negotiating with C M P for over twelve months.
Well, again. You can always, you can always change it for, and lay the date for the solar farms if we find it may be necessary.
Well, I'll say this though, you guys don't want to be rejiggering ordinances that you've already worked on every couple of years. Let me finish. That's, that's inefficient work and it also leads to the public doubting whether or not we know what we're doing. If we're asking them to continually change ordinances, if they just. Well, that reminds us, it's not, in short, it's not new public policy. Yeah, well, that reminds me of once being at a legislative hearing where a legislator. Said, well, if we don't get it right this time, maybe we'll get it right next time. Like I said, it really undermines your credibility.
Okay, that's a good point. However, you've got to keep in mind that solar field is a new product. It hasn't been really tested. Embryotic stage of development. So I think you got to be careful in trying to come up with a, you know, an overall. Standard, you know, you can understand where you come from, if you're right, but I think in this particular case. Again, I'm looking at a new. A new product out there and for service, it's a new product and. That development, what do you want to call it? Think about that.
Well, I, I think, I think one of the other ways to look at it too though is this is going to benefit developers of all sorts of commercial projects, not just solar. I mean, any developer that, you know, runs into the problem with getting financing or getting their environmental permits from the state or the feds. Would benefit from this as well.
Okay, I believe we're putting together a good. So ordinance, so.
Yeah, can I ask something?
Extension would only be one year, three year with a one-year extension.
Were you back to the four year?
Yeah, just for commercial. I think we have a good ordinance put together on this.
And within that thirty-six months, they have to start, they must have completed substantial, started substantial. Sorry, let me get this right. The term is a substantial start of construction.
Well, how do you define substantial?
It's defined already in the.
What is?
For an extension.
Yeah, within that three-year period.
Well. Is that going to help him? Cause he hasn't started anything.
Well, that's the way the ordinance is firmly written. I didn't propose, I didn't suggest to change that, but.
No, I don't want to change it.
I mean, the same concept used in the. Said that'd be awful hard to do. Substantial story, the completion of thirty percent of a permitted structure or use measured as a percentage of estimated total cost.
That's. You need to do that in the three-year period, but that's not to get the extension. I mean, if they apply for an extension, it's just like hello goodbye down there. Applied and not, no start. So.
Right.
The three years to get an extension, you don't have to start anything. To keep your permit active without getting an extension, then you need your thirty percent. But I feel confident in that. I guess I can agree to that.
You okay with it then?
Thanks, Craig. Sarah, I want to make sure you had a question that was started. We'll make sure we get that.
I was just trying to understand Craig's threat on why you would be objection into it. But I guess we're working with him.
I think we're over the hump.
What, what, what was your thought in, in pulling back?
Well, three, four years after the fact is quite a long time. I mean, what happens in town after that?
Yeah.
You know, how do people feel after that? It's four years down the road. That's quite a long time. For something that was permitted, where right now it stands, you can have one year and a one-year extension. So you only tie it up two years on a permit. Now we're tying up four years on a permit.
So I guess, well, I guess I'm trying to understand where you're going with all of it, how, how you've made the curves here. So you're, you're, you're thinking maybe about the, the ambition of the person that was permitted to. That they just got the permit and sit on the permit to do nothing, that there's no, no pressure from the town for them to finish? That's what you were getting at?
No, but possibly having a permit set out there idle for years is a long time. I'm going to agree to it.
I understand, but, but why, why will be that a bad, bad deal? I, I, I just. I just want to get with your wisdom.
Four years is a long time to have an idle permit set out there because you never know what changes may happen in a town in that four years. You know, it's just a long time. You can't just give a permit out and say, we don't do it in any other thing. So you don't just give a permit out and say, get to it when you want to. We have a thirty percent rule. You have to start within thirty percent within a year right now. To keep it without an extension and they can come by and get one extension for one year. So you're only tying up two years on a permit. Four years is a long time on a permit. That's all I'm saying.
So you, you might be concerned that they will give the term, the permit, they will just start in and leave it at thirty percent and leave that without going anywhere else.
What happens to the properties beside this property?
But property value just go down.
So we give them a permit.
Yeah, and they didn't deliver.
Then all of a sudden, four years later, there's something that would affect this permit. Next to it because they hadn't built. So four years is a long time to have it float out there.
Yes, this is tough.
It is tough, it's good.
I mean, hopefully.
And it's just one of the solar fields, it's gonna be all commercial.
Right.
Yeah, or or you know, use a different example, um, uh, a gravel pit, you know, another large scale development, a new gravel pit in town. Uh, and it takes them three years to get going. And uh, and somebody builds a house next door doesn't know, you know, the worst would be that they didn't know that the gravel pit was gonna be there because they might have chosen not to build there. Um, but you know, if we've done our job as a town, they would have been notified at the time of the application.
Correct.
And that wouldn't have happened. There's still a risk there because the with you know, let's say they bought whoever develops the house bought it after the application had been approved and I I I it's just a question of how far we can go, right?
Do you want to be interested in two years and not one year?
So, uh, okay. I uh, I follow it. Can we can we grab the four years and do it in like in evergreen steps? Meaning that we we will grant the two years that you want. But then they can have it two extensions, one with every one year?
No, that's that's it's tied up, but uh, we're gonna do just set on the four years and we're just gonna do a three more.
It was it was an offer, right? That was an offer, so. But I understand what you're saying. I I guess.
I appreciate you explaining this.
Yeah, it was good to hear that. And um, I I wanted to also say that um, other other commercial things which will be affected by this. I think non-solar activities, so some other commercial thing, th- their financial model um, doesn't have the same dependencies that this one does, and I I guess I would expect that other commercial activities would would be motivated to get going if they could afford it.
But I'm gonna bring up hello goodbye again, but she must be coming up toward the end of her session.
Exactly, I know.
Uh, so that's not quite the case.
It didn't work out for her.
Yeah.
So far, right? Um, and you know.
So can can we just then said that we want to do the four years for solar development and the the two plus one for the rest?
No, I'd rather do it the same for everybody.
I think I I'm believing in our ordinance, so I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. I'm good. You good?
I'm good, yeah, you guys are good. I just I wanted to understand the the reason.
I read it short in a bit of time. I don't know, that's me.
It is a long time.
It is understood.
For everybody, I think, if there was.
Yeah. So can we use that language then?
Yeah.
George, yeah. Yeah, so Anthony, did you have that language for some example? Thank you. Is that it for our discussion on the solar development?
So uh, I think just looking ahead.
Yeah.
Just remember, under our timeline, you guys need to wrap up your work next week.
Yes.
And there's still the issue that has not yet been addressed, I believe, with stormwater runoff. Unless I hadn't thought of that because I I had just assumed that the same requirements have quite a whole others.
Well, unless that's that's the going to be the approach.
Yeah, but I don't know why it wouldn't be adequate, but uh, the uh, uh, there are a couple of other things that we need to uh, you know, get to it tonight and we need to we still have on on uh, on our plate. Uh, one is uh, are we good with all the new amended definitions? I think we are, but I don't recall. Second would be, how are we gonna present this to the select board? I made a suggestion in my email that was shared with everybody. Uh, but it would be a fair amount of formatting, reformatting.
Yeah, I mean, this whole thing is gonna have to be reformatted. It's kind of all over the place right now.
And so working on. And then at our next meeting, we've got to be prepared to make a final vote on uh, the, you know, our final first draft, if you will.
Yeah.
And uh, that we're good with sending it to the select board.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it's all over but the crying after next meeting.
Right, which is where we want to be. I want us to be.
And and in the same token, I think it's also important to look through the the notes, the side marking notes on this, just to make sure that everyone's good with. If there are any hanging questions out there, if things good with where everything's placed.
Ah.
All of that, so.
Got you.
That's really important, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, I think to look at beforehand and then to go through those quickly at the next meeting.
Okay.
In order to make sure that everything in that regard is resolved.
So and as to the um, to the stormwater runoff, uh, cuz that was your question, Anthony?
Yeah.
Like have I um, George mentioned, didn't think that we were going to be so uh, changing anything for solar. I was under the same impression. We didn't want to change.
There's a lag in the project, tighter restrictions are. So we already got the stormwater in place for every other.
I mean, the standard would be one and the same. They have to, they can't have any more water going off that property than part of the development.
So I don't see why we have to mess with it.
Hey, yeah, I I I'm totally comfortable with that idea. This it's consistent. We've looked at this, I think, pretty thoroughly.
Yeah.
We're treating the modules like they're roofs, Pete, right? I mean, it's not just the the base, it's the whole thing.
Oh, that would be silly.
That would be silly, so. You know, I'm not trying to rush it, but I I think we're in good shape from that perspective.
Well, and and not that Anthony mentioned this, but you know, that's how I view foster runoff too. We, you know, that's the standard we have in place is based on what the water quality of the lake is. Doesn't matter if it's a solar facility or a gravel pit or whatever.
Right. It applies to all commercial development. Okay, so having said that, cuz I know it's getting late, Anthony, thank you for your time tonight. I'm looking ahead for the sixteenth, right when we uh, meet again, we we need to make sure we can complete the work in the proposed amendments. We want to make sure we're good with the definitions. George, we'll make sure we have an understanding of how to present this to the select board with the reformeriness going on. And to look through all the comments that that we have in the uh.
Yeah, and do you want it reformatted before the next meeting, or is that something we'll attend to at the next? So in other words, I want to make sure I, you know, if 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 your intent is to vote on something to be presented to the select board as is, then then the reformatting probably needs to occur before the next meeting, then we can tweak it maybe.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me so much, uh, as long as everybody's had not has gone through and reviewed all the individual substantive tweaks because there've been a number of each right, each round of that you've sent it out, um, because the decision we make today impacted, you know, something that was in the ordinance put in the ordinance, you know, a month ago. And and as I noted in my email, that the language regarding uh, visual screening, uh, when we added that eighty percent obstruction rule or whatever that was, uh, that start that created some internal conflicts with the language we had approved previously. And so uh, we need to, uh, people need to look at that because if I had offered a way to around that uh, to keep both, but you know, make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
So we need to make sure we review that part, George, in particular, and any, any of the uh, comments that are on the marked up thing to look for any kind of loose rounds, right? Are there any questions that are out there? Are there anything that's unresolved? Or something that's sticking in your head?
So quick question, Richard, do you have committee in the applications at this point?
You have to stick around for the CEO update, so I'm not going to do that. The reason I'm asking is simply because I'm just wondering, do we need to allot for more than an hour at the next meeting?
So so the next meeting, you have a fairly large one scheduled.
I I think it's pretty big. It's a commercial.
Yeah, uh, sure, but a large project. Um, and other than that, I have three more.
So anyway, so I just throw that out there as a potential option is, you know, you may want to.
Well, I have to admit, I'm nervous about us being able to complete our work in an hour. I mean, we run across one si- issue that we initially disagree on. We'll chew up three quarters of an hour just on that.
Yeah. So we need to do any other thing from planning board meeting yet?
Maybe about next week?
Next Sunday, yeah.
Yeah, I I I can handle that.
And then the following Thursday, the final meeting for solar.
Well, let's find out. You can handle that, Pete?
Yeah.
Craig, how do you feel about that on the ninth?
Yeah, I guess, but I don't see where we're that far off.
Well, let me ask you this, Craig. Have you had a chance to look at their, you know, this working draft on the visual stuff? Cuz I I'm just a little nervous about that.
Which draft is that?
The one that we got in uh, in advance of tonight's meeting.
So I tell you, maybe maybe the best way to approach this is, I think I've pretty much got everything incorporated that we've talked about tonight. I'll send it out tonight or in the morning. If everyone will commit to looking at it, and if there are any red flags, then maybe the, you know, uh, a special meeting should be called. If there aren't any red flags, then maybe we allot an hour and a half at the next meeting.
I like that suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I I would think an hour and a half would if we said an hour and a half, um, it seems to me we should be, if we're efficient about how we conduct ourselves. Um, I don't, you know, um, go on a lot of tangents, then uh, we should be able to finish it up.
So I didn't see that. So what's your concerns with it?
Well, just that I thought there was, it didn't reflect uh, it that it by adding that what uh, what um, uh, Dan Newman had suggested on the eighty percent obstruction conflicted with some of the other requirements we had ordered approved, and so I tried to um, come up with language to deal with that conflict. Uh, and I'm just, I just want to make sure everybody takes a look at that, make sure they're comfortable with it.
So it's been a lot of time. So so George did explain that in the notes of what you got, and what I'll be sending out tonight as well, so that.
Yeah, so Craig is uh.
Free to think about.
On page nine. You'll see my my comments on the on the side.
Anyway, that, yeah, so.
Okay, so can, thank you very much, George. So can we uh, uh, I want to make sure we we um, provide Craig with a copy that you can read.
I'm I'm gonna send it out again when I get home.
As a PDF?
As a PDF and a Word document.
Okay.
So knowing that Craig has had some issues with that, I've been sending everything out as both Word and PDF.
Thank you very much. So Craig, can that work for you?
Yes.
Excellent.
So and so just look at, just look for the the George's notes on the side, Craig. That's that'll be the important part of that.
And Pete, can that work for you to have both Word and PDF?
Um.
Either one.
Yes, yes.
Either one you can read, right?
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Network.
Okay, great, all right. So if we do that, then if we can commit to review that information, those comments. If there are any red flags, we bring them up right beforehand, like ASAP. If not, we're looking at an hour and a half on the sixteenth. Right, then we want to wrap this thing up. And Anthony, did you get a quick, do you have a good answer for formatting? Do?
I think so.
Yeah.
I'll figure it out.
Cuz I'm thinking head to bed and go for it.
Yeah, so what I'm gonna send out tonight will not be formatted, and then I'll work on the formatting of it in the interim.
Right. I think that'll work.
And George, uh, oddly enough, I don't have access to the town manager email any longer, so.
Oh, did I use that last time?
None, well, but but you sent out an email about how you thought this could be worked into the commercial development review ordinance, right? Once I email, I if you'll send me back my personal email address, that email, that'd be helpful, okay?
Yeah, right.
Cuz if you start one to the town manager, you're not gonna get it.
I'm not going to get it.
So is it the email that I sent out previously that you want?
You sent one out that that you said you made a suggestion about how this could most easily be worked into the commercial development.
Oh, okay, so, okay, yep.
Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony. Have a great night. Who are you rooting for?
Edmonton. I'm gonna be Jesus.
See it.
So. Your suggestion is the rows of residences, yes. For example, should we set a standard like eighty percent visual obscure from public and private roads, whether it's at a height of four feet? And the first four respective would like, what do you mean by that?
Um. So if i- in that particular instance, the issue I was trying to raise was that um, if somebody, uh, let's say they're developing in a field or even in a woodlot that requires some plantings. Those plantings even on once they get substantial height are not gonna, they're, you know, they're not gonna be as high as the second story. So we have to decide at what elevation uh, is the eighty percent gonna apply to? Um, you could have eighty percent at six feet but only have sixty percent at twenty five feet or thirty feet. Uh, and likewise from a road. You know, I mean, I I guess what I'm suggesting is we need to think about where are people gonna be seeing the solar facility from or looking at in that direction from? When you're driving by in a passing by car, it isn't at twelve feet, it's uh, four or five or whatever it is. Likewise, in a house, um, you know, are you gonna be really looking at it from the bedroom or upstairs bedroom, or are you gonna be mostly looking at it from the kitchen or the deck or? Uh, cuz I I don't know how we could ever get eighty percent obscure location or whatever that term is at all elevations.
The reasoning for that was so they'd be leaning towards cedar trees and evergreen trees for the screening.
Right.
Block the um, you know, four feet definitely not enough, um. I I think it should just be from residents and roads. So if they have to plant bigger trees near residents, that's fine, but if they plant smaller trees towards road and any back properties not being included. Would be mine. I'll I'll work on it again.
Okay, I I yeah, I it just didn't reflect, uh, what I my understanding was of the compromise we came up with, cuz you may recall, I had that I would agree to the setback from all property lines, regardless of whether it's developed property or not, but I I only wanted to see a actual vegetated buffer if what's on the other side of that common property line is a an approved subdivision, not a undeveloped woodlot or whatever.
Well, we got the. Well, we got the buffer from the property line, so that can, you know, that can just remain a natural buffer. And maybe that's what we need to. Word, whatever the natural buffer is. But the eighty percent should just be from the residents and roads and private grounds.
Yeah, I just don't know how we'll be able to achieve that though at all elevations. I I I don't wanna establish a standard that's sort of a make believe standard.
Well, if there's a house or something like take, take steam. All shows.
Yeah.
Um, so it's gonna plant some tall, tall trees along the property line for the houses. He hasn't left anyways.
Yeah, along the road he has, and I mean, there there's some natural woodland there, but I doubt that provides eighty percent obscures that, um.
No, he'll have to play, he would have to plant some more next to the road and the house, but the rest of the property back in the back. I mean.
It would not be instant, is that? When this buffer, but instantly it will not be eighty percent, they can plant it, maybe.
Have you driven by Farmington?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no water, there's no water.
Well, they planted it.
Yeah.
Did you notice about forty percent of it is dead?
Yeah, well, and and I mean, not that the shrubbery that they planted was gonna do anything anyway, but the little ones are all dead too. But, you know, I mean. Even if they'd done a good job, I don't know how, um.
Make it practical, you wanna make.
Yeah, or achievable. I mean, unless we're gonna require planting of. One hell of a lot of full-size trees.
Yeah, this is, I was gonna go to that. So you can, you can transport full-size trees, it's just a lot of money too.
It it was just something that, you know, came to mind that, and as a practical matter, and something that was enforceable.
So then, you know, the portion of it is that you can plant them later, but it's gonna take like five, six years maybe to to.
Well, and I, you know, I agree with your suggestion earlier, Craig, of that shouldn't be just four-foot trees, it should be six-foot trees. That if they're planting them, uh, I'm fine with that, but, uh, you know, I I just. I I was, I was thinking of, like, I can see through, despite the fact that, um. From my deck, um, um, I don't know, five hundred feet away from the, from the uh. Our tree service, I can see his red trucks through the trees. You know, I don't know if it's eighty percent obscure or or what percentage it is, but you know, it it really takes a lot for somebody not to be able to see something. That has any color to it or whatever, so.
You got a field, send me out hardwood trees on the other side of the couple. Evergreens, well, the reasoning for this was so they plant trees that obscure.
They will have a thick canopy.
Right.
And and I agree with that, it's, it's, uh, at. Eight feet or whatever, I I agree with that. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever with the eighty percent. I'm just, I don't know how we'll achieve it at, you know, twenty feet or.
We don't have to, um. You know, we have two feet of foundation. We have eight feet of walls, that's ten feet. To block view. From a window in the first row of the house.
Oh, then maybe that's the solution. I that's, I would just raise the question.
Right, so so say, to say, uh, to achieve the eighty, uh, eighty percent, uh, obscuration, is that the right word?
Yeah.
At at ten foot height?
Yeah, yeah.
And that would accommodate, I I think.
Cause they're gonna grow eventually and cover the second floor window as well.
Right.
And so.
Right.
But I would be, uh, I mean, second floor is just, I don't, you go into better star. Uh, some people do have a lot, but.
Anyway, take a close look at that, Craig, okay?
Um, so that's probably where I'll go with it.
Well, I I certainly agree with that.
Me too. How how will be a type of tree? I mean, in the winter time, you go with, you know, maple or oak, you know, the leaves will be off.
They can't, so it won't work. So that's why we want that eighty percent, so they will use, see there's no use.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
To achieve that, a lot of times, we're gonna have to requiring them to plant conifers.
Right.
In addition to the natural wood ones.
Right. I'm gonna go on the previous. Just follow around solely developers, hey, I got a deal for you.
So if you think that we can agree on something similar to that, uh, yeah, then I think we'll be fine with the hour now.
I think so.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, no problem with that at all for me.
Okay, and I'm glad you found that too, the uh.
Well.
Potential conflict.
I was just visualizing it in my head, you know, and how do you measure it, you know? I know in forestry, there there's a special device you use for measuring the thickness of the, of the overstory. And it, all it is, is a hundred eighty degree globe kind of thing, mirror.
Alright, what, so. Alright, we have half an acre visual from, from a lake. Of the stick now. Yeah, if you're up above, you're gonna see the whole thing. Yeah, alright, I'll I'll review it.
Good, I just wanted to highlight, that's all.
Thank you, good discussion. So could we all make sure to review that, and then if we have anything to talk about? Email it, okay, thank you. Are we okay to move on to the? New business?
So we gonna meet next week?
Not at this time. We're planning on trying to make sure to re, commit to go through the review, the comments. Any flags, throw them up. But I think right now, at least one thing that could have been an issue, we've, we're making progress, we're going in the right direction with it, right? So, thank you. So are we okay to move on to new, new business? Everybody?
Thanks, Al.
Alright, I know it's getting late, Pete. So new business for tonight, we have A, commercial applications, the Sheridan Corporation, um, I guess have the applicant's. Location is twenty-eight Old Route twenty-seven, map for lot thirty-seven. Purpose, construct a fourteen thousand five hundred and forty square foot, pre-engineered metal building to create a new pre-cast production facility. This is a non-shoreland. Conforming lot. So this, this add gag me answer.
It is, um, and so before we delve into this, George was talking to me prior to tonight's meeting. And he seems to recall that this past winterish fall time, this had already been approved.
Yeah.
And I, I obviously would have privy to that, so it's here, but, uh. So he was indicating that perhaps it's just gonna be something that I will take care of now.
Okay.
So I needed your input as far as where you go with this. I looked real quick at the permits from two thousand twenty-one. I could not find this one, that doesn't mean it's not in the system somewhere, uh, Gary did some odd things in paperwork. So I have, I have to dig around and find stuff up. So, George, would you like to elaborate on what you recall happening from the last?
Yeah.
Time of this game, is nobody ever said to me, we already submitted this, this is just recent mission. Uh, I I was assuming this is a brand-new, uh, building permits.
So just to recap, the general processes that were something that triggers the commercial development of yours, that's we do our. Application completion, uh, application, uh, review and approval. With conditions possibly, possibly not, and then the, uh, and do our findings of fact with any conditions. It goes to the code enforcement officer, at which time the code enforcement officer issues. Is able to issue the building permit, and I looked at this and and I thought, geez, I wonder if this is something different. And then when I looked at the drawings, I realized it was what we'd already approved on the commercial development ordinance. And so I believe this is just an application for the actual building permit, which is entirely within the purview of Richard. Uh, you know, the only caveat really is to make sure that, um, you know, there's no conditions on. The, our approval that would impact, uh, his issuance of the, not the issuing so much, but requiring him to put a condition of approval on it. On the building permit, but I, I don't think, I I don't recall, but it would be in the finding of fact while we're saying it. And that's why I I I suggested to him that I I don't think this is, you know, uh. An application for us, it's actually an application for him.
So why would you have to grab a building permit after you get approved for the, for the whole thing for us?
Yeah. Hello, hello, the done deal. Okay, so he, that sounds like you don't have the paperwork, you don't know, so okay, yeah, Gary, Gary misfiled it.
I don't know, I don't know what happened, I. This is the first time it brought to me, this has already been worked.
As long as we double check, Dennis, certainly, it looks like if there's a penny road, you're here.
Exactly.
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
So long as we double check. Or you can double check somehow that this is the same building that we approved. Why do they need to go, I mean, a building permit should just be automatically issued, right? Why'd you not approve the building and the planning board?
Why was it an issue at that planning board?
Well, maybe, maybe it wasn't the process and then Gary disappeared, you know?
I that, when we approved the permit, we approved the building as well.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority to issue the building permit.
That's precisely it. So we have our findings of fact that go to the CEO to say, from our perspective.
Okay.
Cause he's the only one in town that can issue the building permit in a commercial, right? So, but we said, we went through this, the commercial one, and said, yeah, this is a go.
Yeah, okay.
And and when I'm looking at this, just like you said, Craig, this is the one off the penny road, there's that building right there. There's the hillside behind it, I remember talking about all kinds of stuff with this one.
And the one, the, the one that they have, the, uh, we talk about the, uh. The trash cans, the the trash bins.
Yes, yeah, yes, yes.
So, so I will, next week I will search for the original.
Yep.
And then review it, compare it with this one, get the findings of that, and see what, if any, uh, provisions are in there. And, uh, I'll, I'll go for there, uh, and I. I'm guessing that I'm gonna find this permit signed by all of you.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, it should be a defining to fact in law with our signature.
There wasn't much conditions for the center.
They made any, I I just can't remember what, I, I mean, it was a pretty straightforward, clean-cut application.
Yep.
So it might have been earlier this year, two thousand twenty-two.
No, no, it was, it wasn't the fall, I think.
I cannot remember.
I remember, I thought, I thought it was in the fall because it was just when we came back, uh, from Zoom meetings. And I think we opened, we there opened this last summer. It was sometimes, it was, it was just right before. Gary passed.
I remember doing that.
Okay.
I did the fun and special.
Okay.
I think that might be what.
It was.
Yeah, never mind.
I know, you know, I might be wrong, but I thought it was in the fall.
And did Gary? Yeah, and that rebuilt, reached up on the front.
Tell from the back agendas, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll definitely be around, especially Tuesday, see like.
So I'm gonna suggest maybe September.
Okay.
Cause if Gary can remember the day.
See, when you're my age, time flies, so.
It was like later days. Yes.
So, yeah, just moving forward, that's what I'm gonna do, and then, um, we have to revisit it, we will.
Okay, and yeah, give, give me a shout when you get it, when you find it. Cause I can go back through some old notes and.
It was simple.
Yep, and.
Yeah.
And Sheridan, Sheridan did a good job presenting the information I I would call to.
They already had a stormwater management system in place at the.
So, so this is gonna be in process and best wishes, finding that, I think, once you see it, you'll say, oh. This is what was approved and you'll, you'll see it, okay? Alright, so if we can move on from that one, the next one is the CEO update, um. So did you find the old commercial app yet?
The update is no. So essentially, I got, uh, three applications, the fourth being completed. Next week will be Captain Thompson, uh, they are renovating one of the structures at one of the camps here in town. I mean, to somebody like Craig, it may not look like it's that big of a deal, but somebody like me, it looks like it would be pretty good. There, essentially, taking the whole building down and reconstructing it, it's actually gonna be a little bit more conforming, I think. Um, it is in the shoreline zone, so, um, and I think that. Things will run a little cheaper after commercial soul is done, which we will have that hour. Take your permit, so I don't, I don't feel as though I'm back off right now. I feel like we're doing good, I issued like three premises, these non-shorelands. Uh, I think we done, uh, I done fifty-three, fifty-four total this year.
Wow.
We have actually all of us combined in, uh, forty-nine common permits. So, uh, I just sent the select board an update as to everything that's going on. With me and you guys are always. I didn't include both that, uh, but they are now, so, um, and walk on town, our complaints, uh, mornings.
Morning, what's that? What's going on with that?
Uh, people putting their mornings in front of the people.
That did pass, right?
What's that?
That just passed, what, what, what makes morning? We have a morning ordinance that was asked, uh, is it two summers ago?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah. Oh.
Was the summer before COVID, so it was like twenty nineteen, I think.
Oh, Jim, okay, so who who regulates that, you do, right?
Right.
So kind of give me a overview of that, I just kinda, I I kinda heard about that.
So the way that the ordinance reads is essentially, if I have a home here and I have two hundred feet of frontage on the water. Inside that two hundred feet, nobody can put their morning out to two hundred.
So, okay, out two hundred feet.
So it's like, it's like you have property pins here and here, from there on out, straight through the water, nobody can put.
Out to twenty feet. Okay, what if that, whatever it's a hundred feet, property.
Oh, it doesn't matter, whatever size, you probably have fifty feet, then that's your property. In other words, it's essentially extending your property to the water.
Another two hundred, two hundred feet, okay.
Yeah.
But two oh one?
But you gotta kind of judge that with the property law, so.
Right.
You know. But property goes like this, over here isn't this.
Right.
So you have to take your property line and extend that out into the water, both sides, to figure out that this is.
So you hope, I hope like heck, every time I show up, it's a pin. And I want to situate and deal with right now is it was in when I first got, went to inspect this area, I went back today and there's no pin. There's a lawyer involved and it's, it's getting kind of complicated, uh, it's being dealt with. The gentleman who's encroaching is being very good about it, so. Um, and I think that in the future, we probably need to include Dr. Dog, when it's in the morning or a separate one. Because the thing was that this gentleman's dog was encroaching as well as his morning. And he said to me, we don't have a dog, which I said, well, you damn right, we don't. So I, I technically, I don't have a leg stand on the dog, cause I have nothing to back it. However, I can make moves more, he moved it, but not enough, and I know what the pin was. I, I, because they're, the owners of the property put their dog right on the pin, so. I know exactly what it was, and I'm, I have a feeling the owners of property.
Well, we do have some sort of work verbiage that. The shot can't impede. The doc can't impede. Traffic to impede on other people's property, don't, don't worry.
Nothing in the morning one is both.
We won't be in the morning. I wouldn't know.
We're in a shoreline zoning. No, I couldn't find any.
And there's not, there is no dark.
Is it a state?
I have not gone there, there may be such a state that.
Because I know you can't. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure you can't take your doc, just put it out in front of another property. It's got to extend from your property, it can't impede traffic, I know that. And uh, you may want to just check to see what the state's rules are. We don't have an ordinance, yes. But I think we just abide by what the states. Standards are.
Anyway, it's a. It's a lot, it's a lot, quite a good building. Mostly extensions and decks, sheds. Do new houses.
Well, I have a question, on the, you said that one of the camps here. What, what particular camp?
Uh, I wish I could, I, I can tell you.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. Is that public information, me?
It is, I just don't remember the camp. It's not Moden.
As you say, is it Moden?
No, it isn't. And I gotta complain about them too. And they're, I guess they're putting in one more lighting, and the neighbors are concerned about when the kids get there, it's gonna light up like a football field. They're gonna be blinded at night. Either baseball field. There was no, there was no specificity to it, they just said more lighting. Just so you know, that baseball field got approval under the current. Whitley? I don't recall.
Yeah, but, but it did come to us.
Uh, yeah, and then down in the village. It was an after the fact permanent application.
Yeah.
And down the village, the, the barn down there, they're renovating the inside of it and. Oh, down in the village? I get a lot of calls about that, as of right now, I'm in there yesterday and. They're reconstructing the inside, which I had nothing to do with. But uh, there is a shower enclosure in there, no fixtures, no. Water running to yet, so when I spoke to Doug Green in the past and said that he needed a plumbing permit, he's gonna do it with plumbing. He agreed to get one, but uh, what's the? The natives are restless down there wondering. What are you doing, if he's gonna have a commercial entity, he's not supposed to, there's no parking, etc, etc. They're keeping on that, and then some of you may have noticed, um, where the coffin cart is going inside of that building. We had discussed, there's a sign outside that says, a coffin cart comes soon. So those actually complained about that. Something about the sign, the sand quarter sign. Cause it was our, it was an automatic assumption that the coffin cart was gonna be upside. So I had to take the time to go down there, speak with the owners and verify that it was not, you know, and this is just stuff that takes up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's just getting, it's getting crazy and some of these people like, like I get called about dogs yesterday, because Trish Davis. Trish, yeah, apparently, Trish Davis wouldn't do anything about these crazy dogs that are running around and they're brawling people, you know. Anyway, I got rid of that.
Roll back, yeah.
Don't, don't we have a control, I don't control.
Yeah, she just gave a resignation and then. According to the lady who was complaining, Trish, since she gave a resignation, doesn't want work.
Okay.
Just silly stuff.
So, so it's a matter that we need to take up with.
Uh, the fickle public. It's all, it's, that's all my, I got that.
Right, right, right. Good, good, it's not your, not your monk, not your circus, not. About the dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, cause they'll do. This is the elected official, we don't have a dog catcher. They'll have to.
No, you call the sheriffs.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
To the price of us complaining.
Right, and it's not Richard's thing, so.
No, I passed, I passed it all.
Right. So I have a question for you when you're done.
I'm done.
Um, you did put a comment in here about, uh, if there's time to discuss the language conflicting between this and that.
I didn't know if you wanted to take the time for that or not.
I definitely think we should.
Okay. We, everybody should have three sets of means, by the way.
Yeah. Conflicting language apparently between two ordinances. And, and so what it was in the CEO tapes, when he's saying.
Link for us with the.
Yeah.
Issue is. So, so the multi-family dwelling ordinance. Uh, to my knowledge, has not been revamped, it is dated nineteen seventy-eight. So a woman wants to put. Two duplexes on property. And. According to the multi-family, family dwelling ordinance, I think it's the second page you. Under uh, multi-ian housing definition, it says shall mean a structure or structures located on a single lot. Which structures are designed or used to house three or more families. And if we look at the. Walk coverage. So I think I included the, the page here.
Wonder if I had that.
Should be towards the back, nine minutes.
I have the, I have two pages, and the first one comes from multi-family dwelling unit.
Yeah.
So where are we on that?
Okay, so. The multi-family dwelling, I just read to you the multi-unit housing definition.
Yep.
And in the, um. Minimum watch standards, please, I gave you page eight.
Following page, yeah.
Okay, this is a. It says under C, second paragraph, uh, says no new residential dwelling unit shall be permitted, which would result in a number of residential dwelling units. Per lot seating one per forty thousand square feet of what area. But this, the first one that I read says, a used house, three or more families, and I guess I just don't. Perhaps understand that, understand the differences. You're not the only one. Uh, it's a little confused then, in the minimum lot size, after the sentence you read, it goes on. Not more than two residential dwelling units shall be permitted in any one structure. Yeah, that's where I was. And. Uh, I. So I understand. I mean, you can have a duplex. And so two residential units in one structure. And then. But this, but the multi-family dwelling ordinance says, uh, to house three or more families. Structures are designed and used to house three or more families, you cannot do that. Uh, I guess you could, I mean, if you have two families living in one side of duplex, I suppose. And so it's a little confusing, and the woman who, the woman actually did her due diligence, is asking these kind of these questions. I'm looking, cause she only read multi-family dwelling ordinance, I took out the lot size ordinance. And I started doing a little research and I came up with, and what the heck, I don't, I don't get what's going on here, and what takes precedence. And what she is allowed is not allowed. Um, my understanding was better of the, uh. Minimum lot size, because as I understood from when I started, you cannot have more than uh, two residential dwellings. On, in one structure, so you can have a duplex, you can not have a quadruplex.
Right.
Uh, but this one's saying three or more families, now.
Right.
Really, you can get four families in one side of duplex. Well, and, and, you know, the, that saying, the multi-family dwelling. Ordinance, uh, on C on the page that you gave us, no dwelling shall contain more than eight on here, so it could be up to eight dwelling units. Right, there we go. So, yeah. And then, um, and then on, on the following page, to just to come back. Uh, multi-family dwelling units shall meet the following criteria, this is under section six. Uh, page two, it says the law area shall be one acre. Well, one, one acre is more than forty thousand square feet, which is what the. Uh, minimum lot size requirements says, so is it one acre or is it forty thousand square feet? Because we're talking about a difference of what? So. So I, I guess I just need some direction in this, uh. You know, I, I need to be able to give her an answer. Well, the, the only thing. I unfortunately can tell you about this is, as a general legal principle, when you have two ordinances in conflict with one another. The more stringent.
Right.
Applies. Um, and I mean, I've long advocated that the multi-family dwelling unit should be, uh, repealed. Um, but that never happened. Um. And that they just be dealt with as a subdivision, because many of them are subdivision as well. Uh. The, uh.
Pretend you're dealing with any apartment buildings. You know, steward apartments or the apartments down here, where. Affordable housing is given, so, so. There's no affordable housing.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
We do need.
Those, those apartments, by the way, were approved under this. Multi-dwelling unit. Uh, and in fact, that this ordinance exists because of when there was a flurry of apartment houses. Proposed in Belgrade down on twenty-seven. Uh, as well as the ones that, uh, the dates did, um. But.
So my suggestion, seems that we have the lawyer. Available to us, um. Two ordinances and zero.
Yeah, because, and then B, right below, what I read is another, uh, contradiction, says lot frontage roads, public, private, shall exceed by fifty percent. The Belgrade minimum lot size ordinance requires useability, so that would make it three hundred. Cause our minimum lot size is two. So that's exceed by fif- fifty percent, that'd be three hundred. So you have to have three, three hundred, but I like your idea, Craig, about. Sending both of these ordinances to the attorney.
Yes.
Seeing what he, he or she thinks.
Yeah, yes.
That's a good idea, because, and when I read this multi-family, it really did come across as buying more towards apartment buildings than the duplexes. So.
Yeah, 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 in the banking business, using that term, the real estate business.
Right, with a shortage of affordable housing in Belgrade, uh. Uh, you know, these kinds of developments are needed.
Yes.
And I'm kind of interested in like, find out the results, so.
Absolutely.
I think we all are here.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I appreciate the input. And I will. You know, in terms of the, and you see this, maybe even in state, um. Law or regulations, the sloppy use of forty thousand square feet equaling an acre.
Right.
Those are rare, they're never gonna certify that, you know. But, you know, I mean, in this case, if they meant forty thousand square feet in, in the, uh, dwelling. Unit as an acre, they should have said that.
Right.
Like they did. And you know, three thousand five hundred sixty feet could be a big difference. Well, on the shoreline, it would be a big deal. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy.
Right, right, yeah.
Alright, so I will follow up with the lawyer and, uh, certainly, uh, when I get a response, I'll let it all.
Okay, thank you.
Becomes a bad.
Thank you, Richard, anything else from?
Sir, that is.
Updates?
I, I got one question. So, so far. What, what, what is a magical moment for you to say, uh, we have a.
You have what?
A backlog. Of, of obligations. What is the number that, that? Raise that flag for me.
I don't necessarily have a number, because I look at each one and, and determines difficulty.
Okay.
So, in example, uh, the one next week, as I said, Craig might look at it, because he's a contractor. The point, everything just works for them, me, it's not working. Like, it makes sense, but I think it's, it's something that you, the planning board would wanna delve into a little bit. And so then, you know, uh, the simple one, the grant, for instance, that we approved, yeah. That to me is simple, so I kind of just weigh the toughness of what we're dealing with and how in-depth it is, so. So I'm really a number, so. A level of difficulty. How much time do I take? Exactly.
So he has an algorithm, he goes through. Richard's complexity factor.
It's, just Google it, Google it.
Hand, hand rules thing, that, you know, pick your mind with it, so. I have a reference myself.
No, and I kind of can shuffle things, an example, I've had a. A shoreline athlete quite some time now. I approached a gentleman because he's never bad here, and like everybody else does, and I said, so when do you start, wanna start construction? And he said, I'll knock to the fall, so come on, suck me off a little bit, that's all. I said, well, that's great, and uh, matter of fact, oddly enough, the Catherine Thompson, one that we'll be doing next week. They can't even start in the lack of Labor Day, but they would be bugging me, bugging me to get this on board.
Yeah.
But what if it takes this long, what if we have to go back three times, you know, and that's possible, of course, so. Uh, like I said, I'm probably overreacting to looking at this, the whole plan. Craig would probably look at, wow, it's simple. So, yeah, that's. Boy, you guys give me a lot of homework.
Homework, you got.
Oh, my God.
No, no, what do you, what do you have to work tonight, what do you have to do for? It's gonna get with the lawyer about fifteen things.
Oh, okay, yeah. She's gonna find that permit.
Yeah.
He's.
And then let us know.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, yeah, so.
I was being a little facetious.
Yeah, I know, but getting, you get it with a lawyer, you let them know, and it'd be a while, you're not gonna get, the lawyer's not gonna give you a quick answer. And it would just, right? I've dealt with lawyers all the time, so, they may believe you, you covered yourself, okay, you.
Right.
You send them a quick email, or you talk to them on the phone first, give them a follow-up email, and then get covered. Don't worry about it. Really, I tell you, you're really good. Yes.
It was not a lot of homework.
Thank you, Richard, appreciate your time in it, in advance, thanks for your homework. All right, um, may we move on to old business, which we have minutes from the May fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth.
But we already did the fifth.
I don't remember.
As I remember, with the fifth was that. Greg was concerned about the numbers, the first setbacks, and what was called setback, and what was called.
Right, but I, I thought I had the twelfth and still with that.
We don't remember.
I couldn't find anything showing that we did, so I just included them anyway.
So in the event that we have not done these already once, um, have people had a chance to go through them? So, in the event that we have not done these already once, people had a chance to go through them. In the edits. Or remarks. No, Craig. Sarah. George.
No.
Okay. I, I would like to do these one at a time, if we could, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes as written.
For May fifth, thank you very much. And a second.
Second?
And second, did, thank you, Sarah, any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the May fifth minute, minutes as written, so Craig. And Pete, you weren't here, so. Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And I am in favor, so four in favor, none opposed. Next, with the May twelfth minutes. I have a comment about that in a minute. Um, have, oops. Are we all good on the minutes? Or have people had a chance to review the May twelfth minutes? Are there any suggested edits?
None for me.
Sarah, no. Craig, anything?
So, so it also agrees on a fifty-foot buffer, but that's.
So we're on page two, where it says, it also agrees on a minimum fifty-foot buffer. Along property lines, two hundred, comma, two hundred feet along public roads, and two fifty feet along common property lines of existing residential dwelling unit, et cetera.
That's right, a setback, so we're more in.
Hundred twenty-five feet.
Yeah, correct.
See, actually, I think that's wrong.
Is, does the wording need to be clarified?
Well, it, it. This is what I raised before, because I, I tried to make myself clear that. Property lines with approved subdivisions.
We agreed on all property lines, because cut it to fifty and a half, and one twenty-five, for setback from all property lines. Was my understanding.
Yeah, what, what I said at the meeting. Was that I would agree to a hundred twenty-five foot setback, if the fifty-foot. Buffer was limited to common property line, with a subdivision, approved subdivision, undeveloped or otherwise.
So it'd be a hundred and twenty-five foot setback, but the buffer would only be where.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah.
So, so that makes sense, right? So to clarify that, and so we have it documented and memorialized, how can we edit this to get to the intent and spirit of what you're saying?
There's only twenty, twenty-five foot buffer. That would cover both, both sides of the, of the property line.
I'm, I'm not sure, Sarah, I think we're, we're on the spot, George, we're about the fifty foot, and then to be put in the qualifier.
Yeah. Also, agreed, I guess, on a minimum fifty-foot buffer along property lines. In common with approved subdivision.
Ooh, that's pretty good, because.
True.
Maybe, maybe, can you say it one more time, because I think that's, that's pretty good.
Also, it also agreed on a minimum fifty-foot buffer along property lines in common with an approved subdivision.
Ooh, I like that, in common. Craig, does that make sense?
So that means that it's gonna be twenty-five feet on one set of the property, one side of the property, and one, twenty-five feet on the, on the other side of the property. To make a total of fifty.
No, no, it's all on the, on the development, we, we have nothing to say with some of the other side of the property line.
This is buffers, not setbacks.
Right.
So we're not talking setbacks, so what he was just saying, so fifty-foot buffer. It won't be on the back property where there's nothing approved, it would just have a setback back there.
Okay.
But not a buffer.
Okay.
So the buffer will just be about around residence, which is the two fifty, two hundred from the road, and fifty foot from an approved subdivision.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Beyond the approved subdivision, if it's just a back lot, it doesn't have to be a buffer. But it still has a setback.
All right, thanks.
That, does that help?
Hmm.
Okay. Thank you, George, so that, I think that's a good sentence to include. So are you suggesting that, so the sentence in the middle of that paragraph, it starts off with, it also agrees on a minimum. Fifty-foot buffer, and then how you said it?
Yeah, you want me to reread it?
Sure.
And just to be clear for the record, we're on line, on the second page, line, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, starting at, at the far right, it also agreed versus agrees. Uh, on a minimum fifty-foot buffer along property lines in common within an approved subdivision. Comma, two hundred feet along public roads, and two hundred fifty feet along common property lines with an existing residential dwelling unit. Comma. Though, no more, well, in, in ad hoc.
Yeah. I like that, that can work. Sarah, you good? Craig, you good with that?
So, then down. Below public recreational scenic resource to include the lakes, the minor hill road, highest portions of every. Golf club and elevations of six hundred feet or greater accessible by public road. I don't remember the public road, but we're also missing the West Road. And did we agree on six hundred or four hundred fifty, don't seem to remember.
Four hundred fifty by the golf course, so that it would capture the parking areas, because we didn't have a name for it.
Right.
All that, there was no name on any of the maps.
Right.
And then the West Road got captured by the six hundred foot. Uh, elevation. Rather than by name.
So it's only four hundred fifty feet from the Belgrade Lakes Golf Club.
Yeah, yeah, so that. You know, it captures those parking areas where the public can go, they allow the public to go to get a view of the lake. Not to mention their own clientele.
Does that make sense?
So how, hill, mountain hill. They want to be included in that, because it's not a public road.
I'm sorry, Craig.
So how on hill, and mountain hill, and stuff like that, North Belgrade wouldn't be included in that, because it's not a public road.
Right, not accessible to the public. The consequence.
Make sure we read that when we deliver to them.
Good. So we, we know we have to edit, thank you for doing that, are there any other edits to include on this, on this set of minutes? So therefore, entertaining motion to approve the May twelfth minutes as amended.
So I'll put a motion to approve the May twelve minutes as amended tonight.
Thank you. Second, and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I two in favor, four in favor, none opposed, on to. The minutes from May nineteen. We had a quorum that night. Did you come in? You came in, Sarah?
Halfway.
Halfway, yeah, okay.
So I need all the ordinance stuff. Cannot say then, maybe if you were reading myself.
Want to?
From, yeah.
Okay.
Richard, Richard.
Rich isn't here, so.
Okay, then. I, I think we should put this off, these minutes off until we have Rich.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll post. We will do, deal with this next time. I know. We hope.
But you approved twelve, Rich will see.
Right. Because without Rich being here tonight. You caught it, and it's all good. Yeah. Alrighty, that should. We've done two, not the third, seven minutes, I think that's it for tonight, so motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And second, did any more discussion? Craig, you in favor of adjourning? One, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Absolutely.
And four in favor, good night, thank you, Richard, thank you very much.
I understand.
Okay, all right.
You stay here, please.
All right, so, I think.
So, Richard, I'm going to stop the recording and then end the meeting.